Hi, welcome to the Lighthouse Podcast. My name is Alex Camargo alongside my good friend and business partner Danny Silva. We'd like to present to you our podcast. We have a super special guest today, our friend Farley Santos. Farley, welcome to the podcast.
Thanks for having me on, guys. It's a pleasure here.
Welcome, Farley. Welcome. It's a pleasure for us to have you in today.
Happy to be here.
So it's a special moment for us because you hold, you wear a couple of different hats.
In a hat city.
In a hat city. And each one of them is super important, but one of them stands out because we haven't had that opportunity to have somebody who wears that hat in our podcast. And it's a very important position. So you're an elected official, right? So you're councilman in the city of Danbury.
Yes. Yeah. So I am elected here in the city of Danbury, representing the 4th Ward, which is the area that covers, let's say, South Street up until Exit 8. It is bordered by White Street and over until the Bethel border. And this is my second term. I've been on the City Council since 2019. We run every two years here in the city of Danbury. Before that, I was on the Danbury Board of Education. I was elected to the Board of Ed in 2017, first time I ran. But I enjoy serving the community. And this is a volunteer position. We don't get paid. The only paid positions here in the city of Danbury are mayor. The treasurer gets paid a part-time salary and the town clerk and the rest, and registrar voters, I should say, actually. The rest, you know, are unpaid positions. So as city councilman, I don't, I don't collect the salary, but it's good. It's good to give back to the community. I really enjoy serving.
That's awesome. And that's a long-term of serving, which makes it more fulfilling. Can you tell us what you do?
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, people may not even realize what does a city councilman do? So there's 21 city council members in the city of Danbury, two for each ward. There's seven wards, and then there's seven at-large council members.
So if I can, I'm sorry to interrupt there real quick. What's, what does that mean, ward? Is that by?
So districts, basically. Think about it. You know, Danbury is divided up into seven districts. It encompasses part of the middle of Danbury and then breaks out into the outer edges. So that way you get a true representation. Every 10 years, that, that map is redrawn based on the census.
Okay.
And we're actually going through that process right now to redraw those districts. Look, and City Council meets once per month for the regular meeting to discuss any city business that has to be approved by the council. We're like the legislative body. So most people understand what Congress is like. We are like the House of Representatives at a very local, smaller level, right? But we, you know, approve the budget for the city. We approve any grants or new opportunities that, you know, the mayor may want to be enacting. The type of government we have in our city is a very strong mayoral system. So the mayor is really the guide to where policy is going for the city. He oversees the council meeting. So he chairs the meeting, basically. And we, as council members, vote on things. Now, our work really is what we put into it, right? I have people reaching out to me all the time for the little things, like I need a tree cut down that is a city tree and it's on my property. Or, you know, you need new lines painted on my road, a light's not working, to, you know, being able to go through the budget, which is going to happen next month, and figure out where the priorities of the city is. And that's, that's really your, you know, role as your councilman, just representing your people at a city level.
Which it brings me to a point. We get, this country, we as a whole, we get so caught up in with the federal elections, who's president, who's not, who's coming in next. And a few of us got caught up with, you know, all the stuff that's happening at the state level. Very few of us actually get involved at the city level, which it matters most. I mean, that's your street. I remember, you know, we're, we're basically neighbors, you know, we live around the corner from each other and, and he's my representative, you know, he represents my ward.
Did you call him about a tree or anything like that?
No, I call about the lights. But I remember, you know, I'm like, Farley, you know, the lady down the, it was just a conversation. I wasn't asking for any help. And I'm like, Farley, you know, the, this, the lady across the street, actually, the lady down the street has two small dogs and, you know, the dogs are always roaming the street. And I'm like, I'm concerned because I have bigger dogs and I don't think that my bigger dogs would do anything to any other dogs if I'm with my dogs on the street. But if the small dogs actually came into my yard, then my dogs may get territorial and defensive about it. And it's funny because Farley knew the lady. He was like, oh no, it's, it's Mrs., well, I forgot what her name was. And he was like, I can go and talk to her. I'm like, no, no, don't worry about it. We'll go talk to her. But that's how essential, it starts from the little things, which of course, that wasn't a problem at all, but it starts from the little. I remember you guys got together and put some sidewalks around the school because it became a problem for a lot, you know, the kids crossing the street. And that's not even the bulk of your work, but you're fully involved. As a matter of fact, you, 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 you got elected, you're coming from a different party, got elected when the majority of, of the, you know, the mayor and the majority of the people who got elected are from a different party, which is great. Because almost every other councilman.
So let me make a few points with what you're saying there. First part is, you said, you know, at a local level, it's so important and yet not enough people are involved. And I'll give you, I deal in numbers. I'm a banker, so I like to deal in numbers. Only 30% of Danbury voters voted in the last municipal election. And so why is that important, right? You look at a national election in 2020, we had record turnout. I mean, Shelter Rock, which is my polling place, had lines all the way out to the street. Last year, in a municipal election, there was no lines. You didn't have to wait, which is a bad thing. You need to be more involved in your community because guess what? The decisions that are made here may impact you way more than the ones that are made at a national level. You know, national level politics, it's, it's dirty. It's tough to deal with. But it also doesn't impact you on a day-to-day level. And the type of government that we have is more a state's government. So things that happen in the states and things that happen in a municipal level impact you right away. So if you have children in the school system and your school system are not being funded well enough, well, that's the mayor or the city council who gets to decide that. If your roads are in terrible shape and if you're driving your car isn't Danbury anywhere today, you're realizing that, you know, there's potholes everywhere. That is your city government that is responsible for that. That's not the state. That's not, you know, President Biden who's going to take care of that, you know? So, and, and so we have to, we also as politicians or people in the community have to do a better job of reaching out to folks. So, you know, you were talking about this neighbor that you had, for instance. The reason I met her is because I've knocked her door during campaign season and during non-campaign season. And saying, oh, here, I'm your councilman. I just want to introduce myself if you ever need anything. One of the things in the 4th Ward that we have been fighting against is a proposed waste transfer station on Plum Trees Road. And that's been a 13-year battle. The city of Danbury doesn't want it. The, the person received the state permission to do it. And it's still an issue that is ongoing. But what we did was, we galvanized the, the local neighborhoods, reaching out, knocking on doors, asking people to sign the petitions. We collected over 1,200 signatures from folks saying, no, we don't want this here. And that's how we were getting the ball rolling. Not every council member does that kind of stuff. I'll be very candid. I like the folks that I serve with, but a lot of them don't do the campaigning. They don't do the work that some of us have learned to do because they didn't, they don't have to, you know? They're reliable Danbury names. They've been here for a long time. But some of us who have something to prove, and not just that, like, if I'm going to do this, I want to do it right. I don't do anything halfway, right? So, you know, represent the people the right way, try to do good by the people. 50% of the time, people are going to agree with you. 50% of the time, they're going to disagree with you.
Divided country.
That's fine. And if they don't agree with me in the majority of time, then they'll vote me out. But as you said, last election was a bad election for my party, the Democratic Party, here in the municipal level. And yet, you know, I was reelected. So was my, my running mate in the 4th Ward, Joe Britton. We were both reelected.
That's awesome. I think that should be such, that's, that's an eye-opener for a lot of people there. Because I don't think a lot of people realize what you guys just said, like that over here locally is where things are going to happen. You know what I mean? A lot of people get so caught up on the whole president situation and who's up there that they forget about what's going on here. And, 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 I mean, do you think that, that something can be done that you, that you can like have like a stronger reach out to let people know like that, hey, what goes on here? It's, it's in here. It has to be taken care of. So be more involved and everything like that. Cause you just, you said that not every councilman does that. And you think it's a lack of maybe passion for what they do?
Well, I think it's also understanding that we're not in a paid position, right? And I'm not advocating to get paid for it, but, you know, we're not paid members of, of the council or elected officials. So you do what you can, right? You're giving up the time that you can. And many of the folks are busy. They've got, you know, other jobs or companies to run, and I understand that. But I think at a local level, when it comes to how do you reach out to people, it's also about what is affecting them hyper-locally, right? So I live in the 4th Ward in the Shelter Rock area. We've got the waste transfer station. That's a problem. But if I live by the lake, you've got lake issues. And if I live by the mall, you've got airport issues. Or perhaps, you know, you live in the 1st Ward, you're touching the lake as well. There might be an issue there. So how do we identify the issues in every single one of those wards? And this is something that as a party, the Democratic Party, my party, we need to do. So the last mayoral candidate was Councilman Roberto Alves. And that was a huge election for Danbury. And I'll tell you why. That's the first time that an immigrant of, of his stature ran for office. We've had other immigrants run for, for office, Portuguese folks, but Roberto's a Brazilian-American. He is actually born in Portugal. And he ran for office and lost by 171 votes.
171?
Very, very small margin.
That is, that is really tight.
Now, think about this. Mayor Mark, everyone loves Mark because he's done a great job. First of all, Mark's a good politician. But he also did a great job of reaching out to people and connecting with folks on a different level. He won his race in 2001, the first time he ran against Chris Sotero by, I think it was 30, 37 votes, 137 votes? And then he was mayor for 20 years, right? So in the last election, it was 171 votes that separated that. What we are not seeing, and I'm excited about that, was that Roberto just didn't give up. He energized our party. He got a lot of people excited. But now he's, he was just elected chair of the Democratic Party. And part of what he wants to do is better outreach. Connect with people. Talk with people about the issues that matter most to them. Maybe it's not something that's local that we can help at a state level because we've built these connections and we know state representatives, state senators. And then talk about the issues that are impacting their day-to-day lives and how we're going to fix it. But it's more outreach from us. I think the, the issue is that there's an apathy for politics. People don't think politics is anything that's exciting. And also there is a lot of perceived corruption in politics, especially from, you know, the countries that, that we come from, our, our parents come from. Here it's a little bit different. And it's more, you can get involved if you really want to. So how do we get to those people and involve them? It's just a matter of reaching out to them on a different level.
Well, the, it's a good point that you brought up. I, we're quick to go on Facebook and complain about everything, but we never pick up the phone call to call you. Or any other councilman, or anybody involved.
Or the other way around. We're all very quick to complain, but, you know, you're, you're quick to throw stones at people, right? But then you want to do something about it, get involved. That's how I got involved. You know, I, I work for Savings Bank of Danbury. I know we're going to get into it a little bit later. And we are a community-oriented bank. And through the bank, they, you know, incentivize us to get involved in, in nonprofit work and community service. And that's how, you know, I've had, I was raised by, you know, my dad who always said, give back as often as you can. And my dad was an immigrant here from Brazil. And he said, you know, love this country because it gave us an opportunity that we wouldn't have anywhere else. Financial struggles and even myself for education, you know, it was a better opportunity for us. So love this country. Do everything you can. This is your home, right? And so with working at Savings Bank of Danbury, being incentivized to get out there and help organizations, I started working with the Danbury Students and Business Connection, which is a mentoring program in the, in this public school system. From there, I mentored a student at Henry Abbott Tech for a while. We're still in touch. It was a great thing for me. But I started seeing that there was an issue with education, overcrowded classrooms. I then started working with Junior Achievement of Western Connecticut, which I would go into a classroom at Morris Street, 3rd grade class, and teach about our city, right? This is way before I was on the council or on the Board of Education. But I realized, you know, overcrowded schools, not enough support for the teachers. You know, kids that needed a little bit extra help, they just could not reach them because there wasn't enough support there. So I said to myself, well, how can we fix that? How are we going to do that? And you look into it and it was funding. It was not making education a priority. And I thought to myself, this can't be. I had a little girl at that point who's now eight years old. She's a 3rd grader at Shelter Rock. And I thought to myself, what kind of school is she going to have? But not just my daughter. What about every other Danbury resident, right? And I had the benefit of growing up here, attending Danbury Public Schools and seeing that I had a good education. But, you know, in 2nd grade, I didn't speak any English. In 3rd grade, I didn't speak any English. So I was lucky to have the, the resources then that pulled me out of the classroom and, and be able to go through ESL and learn English.
ESL teachers, yeah.
Yeah, the same way that I do. But when you go into a school today and the ESL teachers are on like carts because they don't have a classroom. Or they're at the end of a hallway with a curtain dividing it because there's not space for them in the, the classroom. Or you go to Danbury High School where there's 3,400 kids and kids are being placed in study halls because there's not enough teachers in the, the subject that they need to be in. So they need to be placed in an extra study hall. That's a problem. So get involved. That's what I did. I ran for the Board of Education. Started advocating for education right away. Once I got elected, I replaced someone who left and then I ran for a four-year term. That's what they are on the Board of Ed. And then I quickly realized that the Board of Ed has been screaming for years now, like, look, we're overpopulated. Yes. We have demographers come in and tell us what the next 10 years are going to look like, and then the numbers just explode, right? But we need more funding. You know, it's not just about paying teacher's salary. It's about having curriculum ideas that are going to improve our community. With that, I, I said, well, the funding comes from the City Council. So let me go run for the City Council and see if I can do something about it.
Right. You know, so. You're looking for the, the root of, of the problem.
You, you have to. And then you quickly realize that the city's budget, a municipal budget, which ours is, is huge, to over $250 million, is the set of priorities that the city has for the future. And education for me is fundamental. If you're not prioritizing education, you are not thinking forward in the future.
Pay the price in the future.
Well, you do. And, and if you have a better educated citizenry, you're going to have more economic success. It's the best investment that a city can make in its economic future is funding education the way it should be.
It's funny that you say that. There was an article that I read, maybe five, six years ago, that a college graduate, compared a college graduate from Danbury and then one from New Canaan, and a college graduate from Danbury, at that time, maybe seven years ago, made $26,000 a year, but then one from New Canaan made 91. That's, I know, I understand New Canaan, totally different town, but that's huge.
Yeah. There, there's a big disparity there. And look, our, Danbury High School is a great school. I actually graduated from Henry Abbott Tech, out of middle school. I wanted to see if I can get a form of a career. I started carpentry, or studied carpentry. And I started working in that field right out of high school. And, you know, life, sometimes you, you know, they say, you make plans and God laughs, right? So, you know, life took me in a different direction. I'm very happy that it did. But, you know, we have a great high school with the kind of diversity that we were talking about before. You wouldn't get anywhere else, the, the culture that, so. And we have fantastic teachers, people who are really dedicated to the students and have dedicated their whole career to that. But we can do more. We're not, you know, we're just paying the bills. We had a finance director for the Board of Ed who said, the budget every year, he tried to get it to, you know, equal zero, was basically, it was a bare bones budget. Turn on the lights, pay the bills. So there's nothing extracurricular that we're offering our, our students. So maybe in New Canaan, those kids had some other classes that made them more, you know, higher learning, let's say, experience. But we here are doing the bare minimum just to be able to get our kids through school, right? We can do better.
So my question is, are the schools in Danbury overcrowded right now?
Yeah. There's, there's no doubt that our schools are overcrowded. And you look at some of the things that we're trying to do. Over the years, they've added on these pods to buildings, right? I think part of the reason is, you know, shortsightedness. I'll take Shelter Rock, for instance. A few years back, it was so overcrowded, they decided to add an addition. Well, two years after they built millions of dollars in additions, they added pod classrooms, which are basically mobile home classrooms, right? They weren't supposed to be long-term, but they're still there, you know? And that's throughout the, the system. There is some kind of, of resolution now, but we need to understand, is that a temporary fix or is that going to be long-term, right? And then, you know, we've got the Danbury Career Academy coming up. That was originally over.
Talk to us about that. I'm excited.
Yeah. No, listen, that was over, supposed to be over at the Summit Building, which was the Matrix Building. I was one of the council members who voted against the tax break for that. It was three, there were three of us. And it passed still because I didn't think that that was the proper location for a school. It, it's a complex building. It was intended for other things. That deal fell through and we got lucky that the Powers family came up to the city and said, hey, I've got this building, which is the old Curtis Building. Curtis has gone primarily remote with their 1,300 employees or something like that. And so we want to sell this building to the city. It's a prime structure for that. And it, it's the academy model, the career academy model that some of the Board of Education members went down to Tennessee to study. This is something that's going to give our kids career opportunities and economics and health tech, all these other different components that could really shape their understanding of what a career is like in those fields. Now, that Curtis Building, which is going to be called the Danbury Career Academy, is going to house 1,000 high school students and 360 middle school students. It's going to be a lottery-based system to get in, similar to Westside Academy is right now. But there, you don't understand how much it's going to alleviate the stressors that we have in our middle schools right now. Broadview Middle School, which I went to right up the road from here, is bursting at the seams. So is Rogers Park. Go to Danbury High, you know, my wife is an employee of Danbury High and I'm talking to the principal there, and he said, wait till the bell rings, see what happens. You know, it's, it's.
Madness.
It's madness. My, my nephew, who is a senior there now, has class one day a week that's on the opposite side of the building where cafeteria is. When the bell rings, he goes straight to cafeteria. He can't get there in time to get lunch because there's too many people in the hallways. So, you know, we need to, to think better, not just Band-Aid solutions that when the problems are happening, but think long-term. How can we help this so it doesn't happen again?
Was there a overflow, I mean, after COVID, with so many people moving in here from the city? Was it, was it already crowded before and it became even more afterwards? Did you get, did you guys get some numbers on that? Was there anything on there?
No. There definitely was overcrowding before. So when I got elected onto the Board of Ed in 2017, we were already dealing with overcrowding, probably for 10 years of issues of how, you know, why are the, the schools so overcrowded? And look, Danbury is, is a gateway to New England and to, to New York City, right? So it's affordable for people who live, are moving up from New York, right? You guys know this. And it is a good way to, to get to upper part of New England as well. And again, the diversity is, is a huge benefit, right? And the cost of living compared to other areas that people could be living in is less. So, you know, we do have an influx of, of folks coming in, but it was already there. We already saw this, you know, the, the Board of Education hires a demographer that's going to tell you 10 years what your population growth is going to look like. And it's amazing how they can pinpoint where the growth is going to come from, based off of, you know, like how many people got married, how many people are together, how many new kids are being born, how many people are moving in. It's, it's a complex thing. But yet every demographer got it wrong. They would say it would be X amount of students and then it would be two times that amount, you know, in 10 years. So we're now going through another process of doing that again with a different demographer to try to see if we can get the numbers right. But yeah, those numbers have exploded. There was one year, we had to allocate extra money for the Board of Education right before the pandemic struck. Because they expected, let's say, 700 new students and it ended up being 1,200. Those aren't the exact numbers. But, you know, it's just, it's extreme amount that, that, you know, burdens the system and we don't know, we haven't had the solutions to fix them yet.
And the same thing is happening to cities around here. Are you guys aware of the numbers, like, like New Milford, for example, or, or is, is it just Danbury?
It's just Danbury. And I'll, and I'll tell you, the state of Connecticut, the legislature just tried something to alleviate the, the big cities that are having some of these issues. And it was like an open choice to, to perhaps send your kids to Brookfield and Milford. And those communities denied it. They didn't want it. But for instance, New Milford closed down a school not too long ago because they didn't have enough enrollment, you know? So Brookfield and Milford, Bethel, they don't have those kinds of issues. And, you know, people are moving into Danbury. So, you know, we're, we're seeing that influx.
Yeah. And we see that on price of, of, you know, in our industry, real estate, like rentals, for example. It, it, would you say that it doubled from five, four, five years ago?
Yeah. Your $1,200 two-bedroom apartment five years ago is, is, it's $2,000 now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, and, and what do you guys, you know, I, I understand that that happened, but you're seeing people moving in from New York. Is that affordable for them compared to where they're living before?
Oh, absolutely. Because.
It's, for them, it's like.
Even when they came, let's say, two years ago, right, when, at the, at the height of, at the beginning of COVID, you would get New Yorkers coming here. And I had this, this perfect example of a client who was, who owned a condo in, in Brooklyn, so a two-bedroom condo worth about a million dollars there. And then coming in here, buying a fully remodeled flipped colonial in Brookfield, four bedrooms, two-car garage, everything brand new, one acre lot for $500,000. They're not buying using comps from here. Mentally, they're using comps from New York. So they're thinking, I have a million-dollar two-bedroom condo, super small, and our family outgrew that. And then here, I can put half of the price. I can buy your, your, your dream home. So when they're coming, I mean, everything they're paying here is much cheaper than, than it would be in New York. One of the reasons why they're coming here and not going to Greenwich or going to Stanford or going to Knoll Walk. Let's go to Danbury. We can get more bang for it. Let's go to New Milford or Brookfield. We can get more bang for it, but we can get more land. Like even the choices between Danbury and New Milford, for instance, and of course, New Milford being huge and having, you know, almost for every house, more land, you know? Do I buy this house in Danbury and stay close to the border because I got to go work in the city every day? Or do I spend about the same money, but I get an additional acre, if you're interested in having that additional space? So we, we continue to see it all the time.
And, and I think one of the things that, that people don't often realize is that a lot of folks did come in, but they're not necessarily staying here to work. They're going elsewhere to work, right? That's one of the things that, that we, I think, as a city need to address. You know, how do we attract businesses to come, build their headquarters here like Curtis was? And to be able to have jobs for the folks that are living here. You think about the, there's a, there's a percentage of folks out there in Danbury, and it's a high percentage. I can't recall off the top of my head, that live here, but we're like a bedroom community where they come and sleep and, and they raise their families here, but they're going out to, to work. So how do we attract businesses to Danbury? You guys will know this. You know, a business that's looking to move, one of the first things that they look at is what kind of school system do you have? So that their employees can stay engaged within the, the business and then in the community, right? So when you do, when you don't pass a Zillow search, like you guys are well, you know, versed in, and you look at the, the scoring there, right? People are frantic about that. It doesn't really paint the real picture of what, you know, Danbury High School is like or the greatness in our elementary schools and what kind of programs we, we do offer. But if you're not passing that, you're not going to attract any business to, to Danbury.
Oh, I find myself having this, this educational moment with a lot of, of our clients who move in from, from out of town or from out of state. Because when they come in and they judge the school systems based on whatever score you get online, let's say you go to Brookfield, you go to Bethel, and, and Brookfield High School, Brookfield School Systems or Bethel School Systems will always rate, you know, an eight and a half, nine, nine and a half. And then they compare that to Danbury, let's say, Danbury High School, for instance, which may rate a three and a half or a four and a half. And I always have to debunk that because when you consider Danbury being such a, a, a school system with many more immigrants going through the school system and learning English as they go, those scoring systems are based on SAT scores. So it's English and math. And usually immigrants coming in, they're really good in math and they score well in math. But then of course, how can you score well in English if you, if it's not your first language? So automatically we scored low. And, you know, of course, I went through the Danbury School, through, through Danbury High School. And I always defend Danbury High School because of all the programs that we had that maybe, I remember having this conversation with Mayor Barton a few years back, where Danbury at that time, if I'm not mistaken, had to allocate $1.8 million to send eight or nine special ed students to different schools. Like, it's, it's almost $2 million for that. Other towns can't afford that, you know? So it's, it's a great, it's got its challenges. It's a great school system. And in my personal opinion, when you, by the time you're done, I remember being there, there were 53 languages spoken at that time. And I'm like, that's a good mirror for where I live in. You know, I go to Danbury High School and then, you know, go to Danbury School System and I come out of here and the society in which I live in is, is, it's. it's that demographic as well. It's a mix, right? It's got people from all over the world. Or if, you know, let's say, I go into New York City, or I go to some of these places, like there's people from every country represented in, in those schools. And I think it's, for me personally, it's a good, uh, thing that, um, we have that at Danbury, um, High, for instances. Will it, will it rate well and, and can, you know, especially because of the, the, the short budget, can it do well? Um, with special academic programs and all of that? Maybe not. But I think overall, when you take your fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old and you look twenty years from now, going through that, going through a, a school system similar to that and being exposed to other cultures and other demographics will make you a better person.
Of course.
You know, of course, you have, you may have to struggle more, uh, to go acquire the additional education that you didn't have because the school doesn't have the proper funding for it. Um, but I think overall, in the bigger picture, I think it makes you a better human being.
And I go back to, everything you said there is spot-on, and I go back to, what kind of priority is your education system? It should be a top priority for every city, to understand that if you educate your citizenry well, that you're gonna have better, uh, community members. You're going to have better opportunities. It's the best economic investment that we can make in the city's future. And it's good for like our seniors, you know? There's a real concern that if we allocate more money to education, that it means higher taxes for our seniors. Not necessarily. You guys know, if you have a good school system, your home values are gonna be better. That's better for our seniors. Who, we need to do more to be able to say that they, you know, those folks who, uh, grew up here, lived here, served here, gave back here, now are retiring, can remain here, right? And part of, of getting people to understand that, you know, we're not just throwing away money here. We're doing this for your future, every single one of, of your residents' futures.
Yeah, when you look at, um, Danbury and, um, in Greenwich, selling about the same number of homes last year, or Millray, twenty-seven here, but Millray in Greenwich is eleven. You know, but they're still richest, you know, city in the state, and then one of the richest city in the country. Let me ask you a different question. You, you, you look young, and of course, I know your age, but I don't wanna reveal it. You can do if you want to. You've been a councilman for a little over two years now, right? But then you're in the Board of Ed for four. You started this track early in life.
Yeah, look, um, I think the, the, the pivotal moment for me was when my daughter was born, right? And you're a father and you understand that your priorities change. Your life changes at that point. When you've got something else or someone else that you are responsible for, right? And so I want my daughter, and I think every parent thinks this way, you want your kids to have every opportunity and even better opportunities than you have. So you look at what you were raised with and how you're gonna do better for them, right? That was how it motivated me to get involved. Um, and all it really took was understanding what I needed to do, meeting, you know, some folks in the area. There was a councilman for our ward named Tom Sadi. He's now the Commissioner of the Department of Veterans Affairs for the state of Connecticut. But when I moved in, Tom did what I'm doing now in talking to people. He came to knock on my door and said, I'm your council member. I just want you to know that. And I thought that was interesting. So I kept in touch with him and, you know, my daughter was born and I said, I, I need to get involved. If, if I think there's problems, get involved as opposed to just throwing rocks and, and blaming people for issues, right? So I was elected to a four-year term. I served two years on the Board of Education. I served two years. And then a vacancy came up on the city council. It was Tom who resigned. Um, that was in two thousand nineteen. So I filled that vacancy, resigned my seat from the Board of Ed. Uh, and then in two thousand nineteen, I, I won and ran a spot of my own. Ran again this last time and, and won. Um, so yeah, it's been about seven years, I think, that my involvement, um, and I enjoy it, you know? I'm also one of those people who realize that, uh, politics shouldn't be something that you do either forever because there's a new generation that comes behind you that may have a different ideas or people, uh, who have different ideas. So as long as I can serve and, and do good, I will, you know, in whatever capacity that may be.
It, it's funny that you mentioned that because I think my, my whole fix for our political system in this country is term limits. You know, we can't, we can't have, you know, forty, fifty-year career politicians in, in DC.
Well, and, and I think the, the opposite view of that is we do have term limits. It's elections.
Correct.
People gotta get out and vote. If you don't like what the person's doing, go vote.
But it, 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 it's, it's hard for you at your age to go run for Senate seat against somebody who's been there for forty years.
Uh, there's, there's no comparison.
And, um, we, we, our generation likes to talk from the sideline and not get involved. And then, you know, uh, the, the peak of our involvement is to go on Facebook and, 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 you know, and have shouting matches with some other people and, you know, we're like fanboys, you know? The, the people that we elect, um, we treat them as celebrities and not as, um, servants. You know, and, and I think that eventually would have to end, um, to a point where, okay, we gotta get more involved, like what you're doing. Which, and I'm, I'm proud of you for, for being so young and, and, and serving at that capacity. And then, um, we have to stop all these conversations online about, you know, all these arguments online and, and actually pick up the phone and, or send a text message. You know, you're fully reachable.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're, you're, you know, I can, I don't even have to think about calling you. I'll see you walking with your daughter and your wife and your dog on my street. You know, and I can always start a conversation that way. Before the politics, you've been, let's talk about the other Farley, the other hat.
The other hat. Put it on.
The bank.
Yeah, so I've been with Savings Bank of Danbury for going on fifteen years. You know, when I graduated high school, I had a, a goal of going to college and, and getting my degree. My mother had a stroke right after graduation, and I knew that I, they needed the financial support, that I needed to help. They've, they, you know, these folks did so much for me. Um, they're my adopted parents. They took me in when I was three months old and my life was changed because of them. I'm here today because of who they are and how they raised me. So I said, I need to work. And I, you know, was in the carpentry field for a while. Winter came, there was no work. And I applied everywhere, and it happened to be that Savings Bank of Danbury hired me as a float teller. I've gone up the ranks.
That, that's the position that they hired underage people?
Underage people, eighteen years old. You have to be eighteen to work.
You were fif- you, you said, you said it was fifteen years ago.
Fifteen years. I started at eighteen.
You were underage. Don't lie to me.
I'm thirty-two now, man. I'm thirty-two. So, um, it's gonna be fifteen years, uh, next January. And I started as a float teller and just went up the, the ranks and I love what I do. The reason why I like working at Savings Bank of Danbury is because we're so, we're a community bank, but community-minded, right? After this, I'm gonna go deliver grants that the bank gives to nonprofit organizations. I love that, you know? So today, I'm, I'm Vice President and Community Development Manager, uh, and a bank ambassador as well. And my role at the bank today is making sure that our business customers have all the financial solutions they need. One of the things that we've done, and I, I credit our leadership for this, because they realize that banking has changed, right? When I started at the bank, you'd go to a branch and there was eight, nine people ready to serve you. Well, you know, ATMs came around, uh, mobile banking, online banking, all the, the reasons for people not to go into the branch anymore and limited staff, right?
The digital world.
It did, yeah. You have that digital world. But what you're missing from that digital world, and you guys will know this because you, you interact with clients every day, is that face-to-face personal touch, right? So you can do everything you want for your banking needs on your phone, but when you have a, a specific question or you have a need that you need to take care of right away, there's no one there to, to, you know, answer. So the bank created these positions, these community development positions, and I love it. I'm out of the branch most of the time, talking to our business customers, seeing how they're doing, trying to meet their needs in some fashion. And then, you know, exploring other opportunities to, to attract to the bank. It gives us that personal touch that you have, like that personal banker that you can reach out to, uh, at all times.
To get the best of both, both worlds.
Yes, yeah. So you're able to have the technology, but then also have that, that personal contact. And, uh, that's what I do. I, I, I love what I do. I, I go out and talk to people, meet different people, different fields. You get to learn a lot and you get to see what people are, are doing for their business in that industry. And then you learn how that relates to another industry and it's.
So tell us, which careers out there are making the most money right now?
Oh, listen, I don't know, man. It just seems like everyone is, is doing well. Realtors are doing really well.
Well, we're struggling to, uh, get these offers accepted. Other than that, it's been good.
That's good.
Yeah, that's awesome. It was, it was, it was great conversation. Uh, um, very good to have you in today. Uh, my last question to you is this, uh, and this has been in, in the back of my mind. Going back to, to, to the city of Danbury a little bit, um, they're talking about Danbury being like the new Stanford, right? Because, so can you just talk to me a little bit about the growth of Danbury in the past, like year? And do you know anything about the whole train station going straight to the city? Or can you, that's one of the things that a lot of our clients ask us sometimes, moving in. And I know you've, you know, you have the, the, the insight on that.
There is a lot of talk about that. It started a few years back. It was a concept at that time. It was a good political line to throw out there and say, let's connect us to New York. There's a feasibility study that is being done right now to figure out how we do that. It, it's a hu- I'm talking about hundreds of millions of dollars. So who's gonna pay for it? New York or Connecticut? And is it the company? Is it Metro North? Is it, who's gonna pay for it? That's, that's the thing, right? That's where it is right now. And I was, I was in a, a briefing recently where they went through the study and showed different areas of Danbury that would have to structurally change. How do you connect the, the lines from here to, um, southeast? So there's a lot of work that has to be done, that it's not at a stage where they, they're gonna put the shovels in the ground and we're gonna have it done within a year, you know? It's at a planning stage still, and it's a slow, slow process.
It'll take ten years, could take twenty years.
Exactly. And it's taken twenty years to get the conversation going, right? It's just a matter of, let's, let's get it done if we can, right?
For your grandkids.
Right, right. So, you know, that's what I mean. It was a political ploy, right? Yeah, yeah, of course. We're gonna connect Danbury to, to Brewster and get you down to the city, and that's wonderful. It's just a matter of where's the money coming from and how are we gonna do it? So it's just at the planning stages at the moment. You talked about Danbury becoming more like Stanford. I think there's great opportunity for that, but we also need to attract things for people to do here. If people are going, who are moving into, uh, Rivington and the Reserve area there, I, I was up there the last election cycle knocking on doors and it's not in the fourth ward, but I was helping, uh, Roberto and some of our other friends on a weekend. And you talk to these people and they say, yeah, we moved in from New York, but you've got nothing downtown for me to go to. I'll go to Ridgefield. It's got a beautiful downtown. I can walk down. There's restaurants, there's all these, you know? And it's all, it's one thing, it's teaching folks that, yeah, we do have great diversity downtown, that you can experiment with all sorts of, of cuisines from throughout the world. But then we also need more. We also need to have, uh, an entertainment area for families. How, how are you gonna attract someone that, that has kids to downtown if you don't have anything that, um, excites them? There was someone recently that I met with who had an idea to create almost like a indoor, uh, theme park thing for, for kids, you know? Based off of Disney movies or things like that. That's a great idea. You know, let's try these things as opposed to just shutting them down, you know? Make it more a place to, for people to go. If you've got those kinds of destinations, then yeah, you can become a Stanford. You can become even South Norwalk, where people are going to at the moment. We're really more comparable to Norwalk as a city, depending on population and demographics and all that. You know, Stanford's a bit of a, a stretch, but yeah, that's where we wanna get to. It's just a matter of having the vision to do it and people who are going to actually do it.
That's awesome. I really appreciate you being here with us.
I thank you guys for, for letting me come on the show today and, uh, appreciate this. This is a, this is for you guys. You're talking about how my position at the bank was something new. This is really clever, uh, for Realtors to be discussing things in the city, things in, in your, uh, real estate world. I've listened to every episode, so I enjoy it.
Oh, we appreciate that. Awesome. Thank you for all that you do for, for, for the city of Danbury. We appreciate it, especially in, you know, it's, uh, it's something that really probably burns in your heart because it's, like you said, it's, it's a position that you don't get paid for. And, uh, I know that a lot of people out there may not know that and, and hopefully the audience, when they watch this, they, they kinda understand what your position entails and, and the good that you're doing for the community. So, um, and on behalf of the city of Danbury, we, we, we thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so, uh, uh, that's Farley Santos, ladies and gentlemen. Please don't forget to like, subscribe to the channel, share this, this episode with someone that you think that may take advantage of the information that was here today, and we'll see you next time.